Ready Judge.
All right, it is nine thirty AM on tenth day of July, which is a Wednesday. We'll bring this budget workshop to order. Let the record show Jeff Harris, Richard Tellerberry, Danny Chambers, Tammy Gray, and Wade Bush are all present. And it'll just be another day of talking about budget and budget numbers. And thank you Ms. Stepp. And we'll text you when we go to lunch if I remember that, yesterday I forgot.
Yes, sir.
If I remember, we'll text you. Or somebody remind me to text you. Okay, we've got Eric with maintenance up first, but Eric's a mighty busy man. Let's give him a few minutes.
If I have.
If not, we'll text him and yeah, well. Then after that, we've got Brian Jones with the fire department. Then at ten fifteen, we've got Kelly Harris. And then we'll break for lunch, then we'll come back and we'll talk to Trey and Haley. The expo we're probably gonna wait and do next week also. As we fire up our other talks, the seventeenth, twenty-fourth, thirty-first. Anything else y'all'd like to talk about before it gets here, before I bother? Uh, mine? Mine is pretty much gonna be the same. I really hadn't went through everything. Mine pretty much follows y'all's except for uh my travel and my seminars, which I really don't see why I need to change any of mine right now Nikki. So on mine, we can just leave it the same.
But you do have one in there that we use quite often when we do build property in your budget, don't we?
Yeah, the engineering services, I think it is.
Yeah, is that still, has it got money in it now? I mean, is there still money for next year, I mean?
Yeah, there'll be money that, yeah, that we put in there to allocate for next year. I think it's like twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred, if y'all want to leave that in there. Hopefully, we get a lot of things well, but we may have two surveys coming up, you're right. And they may not get done before October first. So yeah, we better leave the engineering services in there the same. And here again, I'm not getting y'all's business, it's none of my business. I don't know about y'all's, what y'all want to do. We can address that whenever y'all decide you want to. We went over many departments, let's look at some other stuff while until it gets here. Yeah, it looks like the highest we ever used out of that way, it was about forty-nine fifty-one year. We used for the surveys. So maybe we should put five thousand in there this year, because probably the surveys will be using the independent.
Well, that must be probably had to do twice, so you never know.
That's true. We did. Already done, good, all right. So she's got six copies for y'all. Let me just go ahead and text Eric. Yeah, we did.
Nikki.
Freaking budget. Did I remember right, the one we got, when we did our insurance last year, did we do that for a two-year? I was thinking that we did it, it was gonna be in for two.
No, we did, that was a, that was like a couple of years ago.
For some reason, I was thinking that we did it.
I did talk, I did email Denise yesterday. And she's working on trying to get us some stuff.
And that's what always gets us, because you know, sometimes the only way we file a proposed, we don't have those numbers back. And that's huge, what is it, like fourteen hundred ahead right now per month?
Eleven thousand a year, eleven thousand something.
Well, we put, we're putting in the budget, it looks like, for one person, looks like we're putting twelve hundred, twelve thousand five hundred dollars per person.
There you go.
Yeah, whether that's off spring or not, I don't know.
That's probably, I think, just the medical is around eleven, then by the time we add the
Carefree, life insurance.
Dental.
Dental.
It could be right up there.
Twenty twenty-three, we're eleven-five, and then twenty-four, we're twelve-five.
Eric said he'll be here shortly, let's just give him a minute.
For some reason, I was thinking that we had a two-year deal last time we got insurance.
That was a few years ago.
I don't know, year four last.
Yeah, I think, I think two years ago, we did.
So I was just dreaming then, huh?
Because you remember, we had to give them everything, I think it was, and then we got a two-year deal. And then last year, we had to give them everything to get what we did get. Get to keep what we had and still pay more. What's going on Eric? We know you're busy, you're a very busy person, we know that. All the commissioners and Nikki have a copy of what you turned in Eric.
So. And since then, that's kind of changed, because I put on there that I was wanting to get some of this equipment, that wetback I already bought. And this other stuff I'm looking at, you know, a bigger grain auger, because the one we got is just not doing it.
You didn't want the bigger ones, yes.
Yeah. My table saw burned out about six months ago, so I need a new one of those. And vacuum, gotta get a new vacuum. And there's a couple toilets that I'm putting in, money to replace any parts. One of them looked like somebody just took a rocket and smashed the lid, and it's just cracked all the way around.
In the park? Heritage Park again? Oh, actually, it'll buy the courthouse. I know they destroyed Heritage Park two, three times for you.
Getting your table a bit. I'll get somebody to clean it.
Well, what, what do you think, what do you think on your five seventy Eric? Do you want to leave it five thousand, you think you should put more in there for your?
Well, I was looking at it, last year, I guess y'all approved the building maintenance part-time pay.
Yes.
For seven five hundred?
Yes.
If y'all don't mind, I could use that to buy the equipment I need this year. And it's off the books, you don't have to budget for it. And then, I think it's only like fifty-two hundred bucks for all that that I listed.
So take the seventy-five and put it down in your five seventy and do away with the part-time?
Yeah. Yeah, but toilets.
You're one to have to do this now, right?
To do it right now, so I can get it done before the end of the year.
Yeah, that's just a transfer.
Yeah. And then, next year, we can just do away with the part-time pay.
Well, it shows eighty thousand from last year.
Well, that was for that truck.
Truck, yeah.
And also put down that I would like to have a pay raise.
Yes.
Yep.
And you deserve it.
I, I, I feel like I do.
You do.
It's kind of hard keeping texts around here.
You've been to what, three just recently?
Yeah.
Well, the last one hasn't worked out either?
One did show up.
No, the, the new one, he's a, if he sticks around, it'll work out good.
So far.
Yeah. But, yeah, he's actually over there working right now, so it's amazing, I like to watch him. But, I mean.
It is nice.
I've been by myself almost for the, almost for a year now, since last October, except for a few months we had Charlie here.
Right.
Swearing on me.
Where did Charlie wind up going?
Shorty Kirk, I think.
Oh, did he? He ended up going back to Smith Supply or not?
No. But, I mean, that's all I'm asking for, what y'all decide is totally up to y'all. I would like to get all that equipment paid for it for sure.
Will you go ahead and get with Nikki or Valerie and do the transfer?
I'll do the budget transfer.
Will you do it from a part-time into this five seventy, so we go and get that equipment? And then we'll put five thousand more in the five seventy for whatever comes up next year? And then do it with part-time altogether? Actually, this is seventy-five hundred, if y'all are good with that? Let's just take seventy-five hundred, double transfer for this year, and just leave it there for next year.
Okay. That's.
Because you've had a, you've had a rough year this year, we've had a lot of anomalies.
Like I said, if y'all do approve the raise, you can use that seventy-five hundred for that. Put the remainder down there, that's just extra money for parts and all that.
And everything else, you like it like it is?
Uh, I'm not even close to burning through all that money, so I'm not gonna ask for more.
I like what you think.
With dental supplies and repair parts and supplies, that's all good?
Yeah, it's going up.
Even with vanity, I mean, all this vandalism we're having?
I haven't used it all up yet, but, I mean, we are getting to where all these old AC units around town are starting to get out on us. I've seen it and all that, it's, it's gonna start blowing up here pretty soon.
And I know you're just sick and tired of talking about it. Where do we stand on the sheriff's office? Because I know we were doing like six, and then we were doing, we were still behind, yeah. This was way back when David was here, we was working our way through them. Do you know where we're at down there?
We've replaced one of them.
Okay.
Because it just totally went out in Allen's office. And then we still have four more.
Okay.
That are old and need to get replaced. But that'd be something I would probably look at, make industry to do.
So I can supervise and do the whole thing as a project?
Yeah, so that's a big, big project.
And if the corridor approves, you know, we leave plenty of money in there for capital improvements and capital of, for many different areas. So if the corridor approves to do that, along with the contingency, we've been very fortunate the last few years to be able to do the emergency repairs.
And it wouldn't hurt, I know they're not going how to get it, but it's only a matter of time before their water heaters are gonna go out over there.
Okay.
We've been having problems off and on all year with keeping that water at a certain temperature.
Those probably are high volume too, aren't they?
They're big.
And they're probably high dollar.
Yeah, there's no sense in waiting until they go out.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea how many thousands one of those run?
Do not, I'd have to, I'd have to look into it.
I bought one, I mean, I mean, I bought one for the house. I think it was six fifty.
These are these big old board.
They're a hundred gallon or better. I mean, they're the size of me.
Probably twice as much.
Oh, yeah, they're really big.
And we might be better off going tankless. I'm not sure, I'd have to, I'd probably go with the plumber and see what they think, just like.
Looking at, at least just to compare the cost.
See what your, your wiring went handled and what.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's got gas in there, so it won't be so much on electrical end.
Unless you could fire that in.
Yeah.
It's a lot more efficient.
Might be worth checking it out.
Yeah.
Only problem I have with those flow ones is they clog up.
Yeah.
Surely by now, they figured out some ways to help with that issue.
The, the gas ones aren't as bad at clogging up as the electric ones. Sorry, making myself a little off.
You got a lot of projects going right now between this building and the senior center.
Yeah.
And Sheriff's Department.
This over here, I got that guy yesterday to bid the floor.
Yes.
I got a guy coming today to bid the entire.
I had, I had asked Eric to look at, not, not
Yeah, I do.
Deciding anything, of course, I would have built all of us, but I'd asked him to look at possibly redoing the cabinets. Maybe taking that dishwasher out and putting the old stove or oven set, something, just to kind of update that break room a little bit and.
Heard there's a request for TV also.
Well, I ain't, I ain't got there yet.
Heard that request had been made.
Yeah.
He got a free one, he did, bro.
I could have, but I already traded it in. But uh.
In the corner of the wall.
But those, those cabinets are pretty far gone and, and just, just to kind of spruce it up a little bit and bring it back up a little bit. It might get more used if we do that, but.
If something happens, I mean, this is just a question, you know, like current event, something, you know, like blow up something and it's a national news. Do y'all have some word to actually keep up with what's going on?
Like the PIO and stuff, you mean?
I'm talking about TV, you know.
No, you're talking about nationwide, something.
What we do is we go to the O C.
Yeah.
We've got those screens right there at the O C. When we had the Black Lab Matter ordeal, yeah, that's, we had everything activated and then those screens, each screen had a different place.
Do you have one here?
No, no. No, now Mike used to have one in his office full-time, he had cable and he had the weather news on, you know, full-time. I never have done that here, I've just always done the O C. Well, Eric, anything else?
But yeah, that's just something he and I have been working on to, to look at as a possibility. I don't think it'll be terribly expensive endeavor to do that, but.
Is that something we go and get knocked out before September thirtieth?
Well, I was kind of waiting to see what the money looked like and then.
Bring it to the court?
And bring it, yeah, if we had time and available funds.
I wouldn't go custom, but I would go some of those pre-built, you know.
I, I was thinking, not necessarily, but Lowe's or Home Depot type of prefab.
That's all we know, so.
That's, that, yeah, something to that effect is all we need. No, I don't think we can custom stuff in there at all.
Well, Brian.
Have we, have we found all the leaks at the end?
No, last time we talked, uh, he's looking at some pop-off valves that was hurting us on a new boiler system, and he was talking to George Wayne McKenna. Uh, everything was set like fifty-seventy-five, and he said that he could go up to like a hundred twenty-five pounds or square inch if the unit will accept that. If the unit accepts that, because apparently we have some, it's like, once they pop, then they drain and run water until they shut down. So he says that that has been a huge issue. We have fixed a whole lot of leaks, we've put a whole lot of valves in where you can isolate the areas, you can stop the water from many areas. Your underground.
We don't have one in the parking lot, do we?
A leak?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No.
What's the?
We don't have one in the parking.
Do we know what the cause is? I mean, is it cold, because it's hot, or is it just old, or what?
The.
What's the cause of the leaks?
The leaks, most of them is thirty, thirty-seven year old pipes. And some of us were coppers tied to plastic, coppers tied to pipe. Wade probably knows a lot more about, we met down there with him for about an hour or two here, what, a couple of weeks ago?
A lot of it's just been repaired over the years, it wasn't repaired properly. I mean, we just had one a couple of years ago, it was on a forty-five blew out, and it had been there for decades. They decided to blow out the, but it was not done right. You don't put a forty-five on a two-inch line, it carries a hundred sixty psi. So that's where.
It was all underground?
We got more force than we did.
We were walking around in that boiler room, it's got those two water heaters, and they got pressure relief valves, those things keep leaking. He thinks that's where it's at.
That's what he was telling us, they kept popping off.
And I've replaced those, and it stopped for a while, and then it picked up again, so there's too much pressure going through that line, those pressure relief valves.
Cool.
And that's gotta get serviced by a mechanical company. I didn't know if y'all wanted to do that.
Is George Wayne Mechanical, they do them also?
They, they knew nothing about it. So I was gonna call, I got with Mike over at Smith Supply, and he said Brant Mechanical out of Dallas is the one that put them in.
Okay.
So I called them, but I don't know if y'all, y'all want to get that fixed right now, do you want to make that expenditure?
We might as well look, see what it's gonna cost? Even if we sell it, yeah, we need to repair it, because there'll be some things that need to be repaired. Now, I can't make the call to expend the money till these folks vote on it, but we can get an ex, get an expense.
Okay.
And see what it'll cost us.
I got, I got a schedule to come down, but I was gonna cancel it if I needed to.
No, no.
No, don't do that.
Because we know that Wade talked down a thirty-eight thousand dollar water bill to about twenty thousand. He negotiated that down.
I mean, it's barely trickling, but that's where, be where the water's going through.
Twenty-four hours a day matters. And I know y'all have isolated a lot of leaks, you put a lot of shut-off valves in, you've isolated that whole complex. But a lot of it is just thirty-seven year old. Because y'all have cut the saw cut the concrete, hell Wade was showing me about ten different places.
Oh, the building did.
It's been saw cut.
It's just patching everywhere you can.
Band-aids.
It's a mess.
Where's the tornado when you need it?
I know.
In messes.
Yeah.
Question for you, can you change our nine-thirty meeting to the afternoon tomorrow?
All right, yeah, what do you think, one-thirty?
Yeah.
Two?
She said whatever time works, she's gotta take her daughter to the dentist at nine-thirty, so if we can change it, then she can be there a month.
One-thirty?
Yeah, if that works.
Eric, some blood today, would you?
Sorry Kelly, Trey just asked me, would you run and call Michael back and tell him when you change it to one-thirty?
Cheers, buddy.
Yes, it does, it's crazy. I'll spray it if you'll just leave me. If not, we break something from the house, man, I was forget. So if you just put it on my desk and I'll.
She gonna call him and say.
Spray it and. I ain't expecting you to come in and do it, I can do it, but you don't have time to mess with it. But it's definitely not. I think one of these guys switched tiers well, he's probably gonna. I blame my colleagues.
Wasn't me.
Yeah.
Y'all got anything else?
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Persat. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you all for being easy to work with.
Let us know when you get your prices.
I guess you'll send me out whenever.
Yeah.
Yeah, just tell her, me if you don't mind on that, Kevin did work and all that.
I was supposed to meet that guy at like one-thirty.
Oven stove, whatever.
After that, I'll come get with me.
Thank you.
Do you want it on the agenda for Monday so we can discuss, or not yet?
Well, I don't.
I don't have the bids for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Monday would be too quiet.
Let me know by tomorrow evening if you've got anything you want to discuss for Monday, okay?
I should have the bids for the senior center replacement by Monday. I should have today, so.
Just let me know, and we'll get it on there for Monday to discuss. Thank you, man.
I appreciate it, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Come on down Brian, you're up. And I didn't have copies, I asked you if you would make copies for everybody.
So that, I've got two columns there, one's the twenty-four. One's this year.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
I just highlighted in green, like I usually do for increases.
Okay. And I want to see how many greens, that's a good thing. I might haven't got to the second page yet. Well, now I see the big one, five seventy, never mind, I'll shut up, yeah.
Well, like I said, I just want to put some stuff on y'all's radar.
Well, you want to start at the top and just go down through there? We'll follow you. Yeah, very bottom line.
One oh four, that went up. I told Macy we'd give her a dollar an hour raise when she got her E N T certification. So that's two thousand eighty. Cert pay, we've got several folks coming out of paramedic school. So that's the increase there for those people, assuming they all stay, I expect. We typically use one or lose one or two, whatever. We get a group out of paramedic school, so that, that may not go up that high. Firefighting supplies went up ten. We're, we're, we're getting a lot of fire hoses and stuff that's happening with me, that's failing, it's aging out.
Do those age out, or they test out?
Test out.
Both, I guess, yeah.
They're getting old and they're, yeah, they're, so we test them every year at the beginning of the year.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
And the last few years has, has been pretty rough for us.
Right.
Down to mobile telephones, we're adding routers to some vehicles, and then we're putting, we're wanting to put tablets with the Zerkr. And all the ambulances, the command vehicles, and like engine one, ladder one. So computer maintenance, that's, Eddie and I are still working through what the total cost would be, but that was his initial estimate was about thirty-two thousand to implement that, I think it's gonna come in way less than that, but.
Why is, what, what are we talking about there Brian?
You know how the, all those law enforcement vehicles have a pedestal and then a laptop? We're wanting to do some sort of mounts with tablets, but that'll, that'll give all the, the information from Zerkr, the dispatch information, directions. I don't even know what else on Zerkr, but, but, and then I can show in route and on scene just by pushing buttons. So I think, I think that's gonna come in way less, because I don't think we're, we're needing as heavy-duty mounts and stuff as what the sheriff's office has for their laptops.
Are y'all doing that in-house, or are you gonna send them off?
Uh, that'd be, for what I understand, Eddie would be doing it.
And Eddie did hire another personnel, if he can keep him, he's got another person now. He's had trouble, not because of him, but just because of the market, he's had trouble keeping good people.
Uniforms going up to twenty, we, we've had a lot of volunteers this year, so we're having a hard time keeping up with uniforms for everybody. We've added fifteen at least this last year. So the big.
That was the big one.
It's five seventy, uh, there's some S C, SCBA bottles that are baged out, we need to replace. Brush one, our smallest brush truck is a two thousand seven, and we're starting to have a lot of issues with that. I'd like to get another one of those big Chevy trucks like we got this last year to replace one more douche and a half, one of those old military trucks. And then the big one is an ambulance. So on there you'll see it says Fraser Ambulance, two ninety-five, that's just, that's for the ambulance, that's not including the cab and chassis either. They're hit so far behind, like Dodge won't even sell them vehicles anymore. So we'll have to go out and buy our own cab and chassis and then take it to them.
So three hundred, nine thousand dollars just for the module?
Correct, and an outfit.
Because it was running this, what, like four fifty to six hundred thousand on the last, by the time you fully equipped it?
Total would be, you know, three, three eighty-five, I think the last one was
And then by the time you.
Shy, three fifty.
Medication and I forget what all began.
Which all that, most of that will transfer over, you know, all those, all the meds and a lot of the equipment and everything.
So that truck, you'll be going, it'll go out of service?
Yeah, it'll go to a reserve. That truck is a twenty-ten, I believe. So we're already a couple of years past where we should have been.
Now those cab chassis are valuable for you to get?
Yes, I mean, uh I went off their bid, they had eighty-six thousand on there, I think we'd have had a chassis cheaper than that. That, that last big truck we bought came in around seventy-three, I think. Some of this, I don't know if we can knock off with the sales tax.
And what I've been telling everybody Brian, as you well know, you've done this many years, we put everything in worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
And then as we work through the next few weeks, we figure out what we can, and we'll, you know, trim and cut. And go from there, because you know a question eventually gonna come down. If you had your pick of two or three of those, what would you put first, second, third?
Yeah, the ambulance is, is highest probably.
Ambulance is number one right now?
Yeah, the, I mean, and the SCBA bottles we gotta have, but you know.
Two, okay.
And then that, that smaller flatbed truck.
Thirty-five hundred?
Say that again?
The thirty-five hundred?
Yes, sir.
I'm just labeling them first, second, third, that's what I'm doing. And the problem with all of this, except for the bottles, we know there's a waiting period, six, twelve months, so you couldn't get any, any of these done by September thirtieth, except maybe the bottles, you might be getting that done by this year.
Yeah. Yeah, the even that ambulance, you know, the ambulance is, is an eighteen month.
So either we talked about it this budget cycle, we'd be looking at twenty-five, twenty-six before we actually spend the money.
What we have to do to budget for it, but keep it into another budget year.
Wade was saying in the last conference, they were told how they could do that Williamson County, is that what you told me, or Williamson, how they could allocate it, put it aside and bring it back in?
Yeah, this lady was talking about, they were talking about the period between October one and January thirty-first, January third, whatever that may be, that they didn't have any money to buy, purchase these new items that they had proved on their budget. But everybody was complaining, they waited, had money in the bank. Well, the money in the bank was earmarked for purchases that were done that year, they're waiting, money's being held in, in accounts, the faith of when they come in. So I don't know what the procedure is. Nikki, I'm not telling, not trying to do your business.
No.
But she, she volunteered that information, I just picked it up, you know. Because they were, because people were wanting stuff, they wanted to order stuff October one, well, the money's not there, until they get their taxes paid in January, but there is money in the bank, well, she explained why there's money in the bank.
So they pulled it in and used it, and replenished it in January thirty-first.
Yeah, well, they just left, you can't spend it, just because it's sitting there, we sold money in there, but that's variety for stuff that's a dollar, you can get it by the court.
They had it like encumbered?
Yes.
Like we do on many different items?
Right.
It's encumbered to this expense.
Yeah, and it went from one year to the next.
Makes sense.
Even, even the big brush truck we ordered this year, you know, the, it took so long for them to build
I know.
The truck at the plant, we just got it, and now. The truck at the plant, we just got it, and now we're in line at an outfitter, but I don't think it's gonna be done before budget.
That's like a radio, Jeff and Brian, how much you think that we'll be able to pay? I know we paid roughly a million, roughly so far. You know, any more bills that'll be coming in for September thirtieth, we go and take out this year's budget that we allocated?
We're gonna have to add, the panel we have now in the IT room will not support two twenty-five amp circuits. So they're gonna have to split the box. So I've talked to, um, man's guy.
Eric?
Yeah, sorry, he's getting the electrician in, so there's gonna be an expense on us.
That was a one we weren't expecting. An expense we weren't expecting.
Correct, but they have to, 'cause the panel in the back is full, and the, the worry's been all along that they won't support, I think the power coming in won't support an additional fifty amp. Fifty amps draw on that box. Oh, coming into the building period? Correct. Could be a big issue. Now, Eric seems to think the electricity, they could split it, I don't know anything about electricity, if they split it, we should be fine. But they're not, but I told him, well, that's, that's only, I. I don't either. I don't know about that.
Where, uh. Where are we in the process on the radio system as far as progress?
Well, I'm expecting the final two pieces of the radio tower, I'm sorry, the cabinet today. And the guys will come in tomorrow to start setting it all up. He said his goal is January one flipping the switch.
Okay, that was my next question, does the wind, when it looked like we're convertible?
Pretty hard for it to be prior to, but, and he hopes that we're not into February, but he's, his hope is by January one flipping the switch.
And that's Arpa money.
And excused by ignorance on this, when it hits the ground, even though it's not actually hooked up in operation, when it hits the ground and we receive it, if everybody's good with it, we go ahead and pay for, for what we have received?
I think it's, yes, the equipment's been paid for.
Yeah, we've been paying a lot of.
Radios and stuff, I think, the invoices have come in for those.
Okay.
But the equipment we're still getting is part of that, some of that milestone stuff.
Okay.
And, uh, but they wanna set up the radio towers and all that today, or this week, if they can, and let them start running. 'Cause they wanna watch them for a month or two, just running, 'cause if they're gonna fail, they said they'll fail then. That's why he's projected possibly a January one switch, 'cause it's coming in a lot quicker than I thought.
Good, and I know I'm repeating myself, but anything that we can pay that we allocated out of this budget, we need to go ahead and do, 'cause then we gotta figure out, we know the money's there, we allocated, we just gotta figure out how to bring it forward. And you know, it, it may appear to be a deficit budget, we know in our minds it's not a deficit budget, it appears to be a deficit budget because of the money's allocated, you just wanna expend it, so then we gotta figure out how to bring it forward for next year.
And I've talked to Valerie on that too, I've been talking with her as we go along, because it's ARPA funds that we're using. And she's taking it out of ARPA and knows it's not gonna be done by October first.
And allocated and know where it's all.
Yes, she's, she's assured, she's keeping up on that end of it, so.
Perfect, sorry, Brian, we got off track. But I know you're tied in with the radio system too, and your new computer system is probably gonna be tied to it pretty heavily, I would imagine.
So what on the SCBA bottles? Did, did you mention any about possibly getting those now?
I did, if we.
I thought that's what you said.
Y'all are good with it, I'll put it on the agenda for Monday, we'll discuss it in court Monday, and if y'all decide we wanna expend that money, then we can go ahead and just get that done.
Yeah, we've got it.
If the court's ready, then we don't have to move that forward to next year.
We've got it, let's do it and get that, those out of date ones done.
Y'all can determine how y'all want to do it, if you wanna do it out of your sales tax dollars, for first responders, or if you wanna do it out of your contingency that we struck you up to y'all.
Yes, sir. That should be something that's available right now, right, Brian?
Should be.
Would you mind going ahead and checking, see if we can get them, and then I'll go ahead and have it on the agenda, and if you don't have the numbers, then we'll move it on to the next agenda, but if you've got the numbers, we'll go ahead and just knock it out. Would you remind me to put something on Monday's agenda pertaining to Somerville County Fire Department? I do appreciate it, thank you, ma'am. All right, anything else, Brian?
Uh, just emergency management.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. I think the six hundred thousand, so I got my mind someplace else.
I did, I didn't change any of that.
Uh, we need to look at the, I think, I know we get reimbursed, but we pay for the code red and the IPAs upfront, and then, you know, the plant reimburses for a portion of that. I think that amount has went up to like between twelve and thirteen thousand. So if you don't mind, if you're good with that, we'll up that to fourteen thousand, if the court's good with that, we get all of the code red back and fifty percent of the IPAs back. But we normally pay it every April, and then we get reimbursed in the summer. Nikki, I don't know if we've been reimbursed, I know we turned in invoices to be reimbursed.
I don't, you gotta read that.
And I know y'all probably know this, it comes back from the nuclear power plant, because of the IPAs, the only reason we have it in place is because of the nuclear power plant.
Right.
What's that fifty-six down there, isn't it?
Uh, that is dues and publications at five forty, uh, five eighty-four hundred. Where we pay for that, the dues to have code red and IPAs.
And you went for that at what?
Fourteen, because you see, one year we spent fifteen thousand one hundred twenty-eight, that was above and beyond the code red and the IPAs.
What's the percentage that the plant pays, a hundred percent or fifty?
They pay a hundred percent on code red and fifty percent, no, I'm lying, they pay fifty percent on code red and a hundred percent on IPAs. The code red portion is about seven to eight thousand, and the IPAs portion, I believe, is what is that, six to seven thousand, Brian? I don't have invoices in front of me. Yeah, we, we split the code red and they pay a hundred percent IPAs. And I'm sure, y'all know, I'm repeating myself, you know, that is, it doesn't matter if your device is tied to the network or not as far as being in the, the list. If something really does melt down and there's a problem, it hits every device that's turned on at the time that incident happens. It doesn't matter if you're signed up or not, it hits your device.
Go, never alert.
And when you, when you get that one from Somerville County, well, yeah, you need to take that one seriously.
Pay attention to that one.
Yeah, that one.
Be your court driving away.
Yeah, might wanna already be driving. That's true, we go through that in the drills every year. All right, anything else at all, Brian?
On the, uh, trucks that you're looking at, thirty-five hundred and sixty-five hundred, you said that we have one now that, that you're talking about replacing, or is that two you're talking about replacing?
So we just got one this, like, a week ago to replace one of the, you know, the big flat nose army trucks.
So you're looking to replace another one, okay.
They've not been liable.
Do those things, as, the ones we have as they stand, have any value at all? I know the place probably won't take a trade, are they actionable? I mean, I don't wanna see them go down and sit in the pasture and deteriorate.
I was gonna, at one time.
We can get five thousand dollars for them, yes.
Mark had a trade-in worked out with the outfitter. Uh, that's been five or six years ago.
Right.
'Cause we denied, we were getting another one of those flat nose Stewart Stevenson's, and we just, we declined it, 'cause we've been having so many issues with them. The older trucks, we're keeping those, the old deuce and halves, but it's those flat nose Stewart Stevenson's, they just keep, we've been through five of them, I think, and we only have one.
Very unreliable, yeah.
The new truck we got is replacing one of those that has, had a blue engine in it.
Heard you talk about them many times.
Yeah.
So we're just, and it's getting ordered and ordered, find anybody that can work on those, that older stuff.
I just wondered if there was an option out there to trade or sell or whatever, and just.
One more sale, if we sold them in a bake, I'm sure we could get probably.
Get something.
Get, get a good price for them.
I, I don't know that we'd get that much out of it, but it'd be something.
Better than, than, sit down there and rock.
You think better than nothing.
Exactly, exactly, right.
And Brian, I was mistaken, I didn't, I'm not rushing you, Ellen.
No, not at all, I'm done, thank you.
We need to go back to emergency management and talk about the five eighty-nine hundred, that management equipment and grant, 'cause we had that two million fifty thousand in there, and I was gonna cover certain things, that money, that particular amount's not gonna be there this coming year.
Yeah.
So that will need to be reduced by. Yeah, because fifty thousand we could bring in from the plant, and then we expend that back out through emergency services, but.
Or is that? Or is that higher plant money in professional services?
Yeah, that's, that's actually as we expended out, and I guess we show it as income, we show it on the front two pages, don't we, on the grant, so we'll have to modify that too. But I know this expenditure that we're showing right here, two million, is, yeah, is not gonna be there this year.
Well, I mean, it's, that's what we set aside for the, for the building, wasn't it?
Yeah. So what do you think, keep it set aside for, 'cause we're, we're working toward that, we've got the bids out, uh.
If we haven't spent any money, we should be able to just put it back in there, I would think.
There's where the question gonna come, Nikki, how would.
We can, uh, we can, we can do that.
Figure out how to account for it?
Yeah, as long as it's, everybody understands what we're doing.
Right, that's the biggest goal and the key right there. So, everybody's comfortable right now, leaving it like it is until we see what we do with the building, and then Nikki tells us how we bring that money forward.
Yep.
'Cause we did not expend any of it on that particular item. All right, anything else, Brian?
Nope.
What's the progress on the building?
We just went out, I'm sorry.
Out for bid for, what were we, the contractor or project?
Build design.
Yeah, the managers.
They won't, they won't come back in until the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Maybe we can discuss it in August or wort it, and then we can move forward with that, that'd be great.
Project manager bids, yeah.
And I think we received the last pallet of lights last night, yesterday evening, so we should be able to start this project within the next week or two.
Get it going, great.
We have a lot of that money expended before September thirtieth also. All right, Brian, now I say, you done? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what we told everybody else, Brian, you know, the court doesn't have a clue who they're gonna set yet on three percent, five percent, if any, uh, we don't know what the benefits insurance is gonna be, as we look through that, then, you know, we'll know by August fifteenth when we file the proposal. All right, Kelly, I guess you're next. You made plenty of copies?
I did.
Thank you. Don't get bruised up before she gets this table. And what we've been doing, the reason I asked for six, Kelly, was so Nikki would have one along with us, so she could keep track.
Actually, nine-one-six.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also added some extra stuff too.
Oh, great.
Explanation and a lot of more.
Oh, I see. Revenue event advertising, so is associated, so these folks, these computer setup building and. Front and back. As Kelly, as you well know, you and I have discussed briefly on the future of where we all go with the CBB and how we do and what we do and so on and so forth.
Yes, sir.
So we'll see what, where the court decides they wanna go and where they lie and all that good stuff. So anyhow, you fire away, Kelly, you know, start at the top and.
Well, I, I put the numbers on, in the blue column, and then the green column is from the golf course, uh, in the past when I was just county tourism. Golf course paid for theirs, but I represented them, and the expo paid for theirs, I represented them. So, since we're back to just being the county, um, I got the prices for what the Texas Golf Insider Magazine would be, um, that we're advertised in every month. We also do podcasts with them on their Facebook page, Avid Golfer is another one that we do, and then the Golf Show. Uh, so that would need to come out of the golf course, if they still would like for me to represent them in the booth and do their ads and all that stuff. I typed this up just to kinda give a little explanation for each of the different line items. Um, our hotel tax has been down some this year, but I've been talking to Airbnb, uh, as you know, they only send a check without any description or name or how much each particular person they're collecting from. So I don't know how many are going to the city and how many are actually coming to us, but I've gone through all of Airbnb, uh, for Somerville County, uh, Airbnb facilities. I can't get addresses on them or names on them, but I can get the link, and I've been talking to them, and I sent them over fifty links that are inside the county that I don't, I know we're not collecting from all of them. If we were to be able to collect from those, that'd be probably double, more than double the county's, the hotel tax. I'm also asking Airbnb to send me a contract like they have with the city, uh, to collect the county hotel tax. I still won't know who it's coming from, but if they do that, they will collect from everyone that's on Airbnb, the local hotel tax.
Kay Myers has been on us, and I haven't known, answering questions, she wants to know how we find the ones that are not on the radar, not paying. And this is one way that Kelly's found, maybe she can find some of them, because, you know, it's easy when Kelly and Earl and Valerie send out the notices, we know the ones, and when they don't pay, Trey follows up with a letter. But the ones like Kay's talking about, they've never been on our radar, they may be on Airbnb and VRBO.
And HomeAway, now, there's, the city has a contract with Airbnb and one with HomeAway to collect the local hotel tax for the city. The problem has been is that apparently Airbnb and HomeAway believe that the seven-six-oh-four-three address is all of glamorous.
Right.
And it's not, you know, so that's where a lot of it's getting messed up. So I did send them the notice once I went through all of it and told them which ones are county that do not need to be sent to the city.
Right.
And not trying to bring up bad blood, but we went through this Michael Lemmons, and we pretty much got stonewalled on how we were gonna deal with the city to get that money that was actually in the county.
Yeah, they don't, they didn't care.
So as we get more data, then we'll go back and we'll talk with them again to see.
Right, because these that are on Airbnb that we're not able to collect from are very expensive Airbnbs. A lot of them are up in Chalk Mountain, their resorts.
Right, Chalk Mountain.
Walnut Springs address.
And you know, that's what's unique to Somerville County, I know it's weird, you know, being a small county, we still have five different zip codes.
Right.
And, you know, you have Blountdale, Walnut Springs, Johnson, Cleveland, uh, you have many different addresses, but it actually all comes to, or supposed to come to, Somerville County.
Which is why I went through every single item that they had, now, I have not done HomeAway yet, but most of the time HomeAway and Airbnb are the same. I did go on VRBO, which is the one Cave on Arizona, uh, and everything on VRBO is captured on Airbnb as well. So, you know, Airbnb looks like to be our best source to be able to collect everything that we are due.
All right, sorry, Kelly, we got you set.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
So, um. Let's see here. Also, um, the new website that we're developing is just about finished, and what we've done on that is actually highlight all the county lodging partners that we have. With pictures, with amenities, with all that stuff, those are the ones we're gonna be pushing for people to stay at, you know, go to. Those are the ones we're gonna be pushing for people to stay at, you know, go to, uh, you know, cause that's what our bread and butter comes from. This highlighting on those, you know, as we get more, if they find out that we're, if we do an agreement with Airbnb. And people start finding out that they're collecting the local hotel tax to send to us, then they, maybe they'll come to me and find out what's going on. We can add them to the website as well. Uh, but my main goal is to promote our lodging facilities that are in the county. So, on the event, does he have any other questions on the possibility of raising more revenue? Okay. Um, on the event fees revenue, uh, three sixty-two hundred. I have not put anything in there. Um, I still have budgeted for, uh, two, three events. One is the, what was called the Moonshine Festival last year, calling it the Heritage Festival this year. To kinda incorporate all of Somerville County's heritage and it starts back to the dinosaurs all the way up to the third day. Um, then the, uh, Plexi River Fest, which was not able to be last year, but this year, um, you know, the commissioner at that time wanted me to continue doing it. And I, I have a group that can help me continue that next year. This year, we did the Friday Night Floats with, uh, Kay Hits. And the idea is to kick it off with the Plexi music, uh, Plexi River Fest and go right on into Friday Night Floats. So there'll be music for the home of the teens in that one. So, the event, event fees would be any, um, vendor spots that we sell, any sponsorship that I can get, you know, for the events. Uh, that type of stuff and that's hard to, you know, determine, uh, how many you're gonna get from each of those. So, there will be, uh, revenue, but I don't have a clue what it's gonna be.
We understand.
And it also depends on if y'all want me to continue with events or not.
Right. The whole future as a whole?
Yes. Um, as far as advertising goes, um, my advertising, I have out to the right, uh, how much and, and who. Uh, AJR Media, and I've got it written in the typed up person portion. AJR Media is who I go through where we get most of our leads from. Uh, they do, through them, I get, I get in the Texas State Travel Guide, which is given out to anybody who calls the state asking for information on Texas. Uh, it's also Texas Highways Magazine. There is an ad in that from us. The Texas Events Calendar that we can put our events on. That, uh, they do that four times a year, uh, during each season, so, you know, we can put that on there. Uh, Tour Texas, which is where we get our leads and a native Texas campaign. Now, I don't have to, uh, sign a contract for all of those. We can remove some of those if y'all wish, need to lower that a little bit. But Tour Texas, uh, since October first last year, we've had eleven hundred and ninety-two leads. And so we've sent out eleven hundred and ninety-two magazines to people who have requested information from Tour Texas. Um, Texas Highways, they just started sending leads in February of this year. So, so far, we've received thirty-one leads from them. They send them to us weekly, both of them. Uh, so they got sent magazines and before the Explorer Glen Rose website got shut down, we were getting leads from that as well. On our new website, we are also setting up a form where people can fill that out and send it, you know, send it in through our website to get more information. So we can send leads out to them as well, so, uh.
Y'all still do the magazine that all the, uh, tourist incomes?
Yes, I have. The city was not using any of the magazines. So, uh, we have collected all of the magazines so that we can continue sending those out, uh, for people to have information. And also, the Tourism Information Centers request a lot of those magazines. Other CBBS request those magazines. So, it, it's a, it's a very valuable marketing tool for Somerville County. Um, I did not include any money to do a new magazine this year. I feel like we have enough to get through this year without having to recreate a new one. So, I'll just work from that. Tried to cut this back as much as I can. Um, also, so that was AJR who all they have. As far as Hank and them, Kay Hits Radio Advertising, I have, uh, they've given me a prize for advertising for the Heritage Festival. For the Plexi River Fest and Friday Night Floats, which they helped sponsor the bigger cases. And for, uh, an annual contract to where they promote Somerville County every other week on the weekends with radio ads, which we can change regularly. To, you know, if there's something special that we want to promote or whatever, we, we can change that ad regularly that's bringing people to Somerville County. Uh, so that really helps out a lot. Uh, so those are, those are the only advertising besides the golf course ones that, uh, I'm requesting, uh, like I said, uh.
Me and Jeff, we need to remember to talk about the ones in green with Jeff. I know it's not gonna happen next week, but anyhow.
Yeah.
We just need to remember to discuss that with him.
You know, the main two on the advertising from AJR, I believe is the Texas State Travel Guide, Texas Highways Magazine and Tour Texas. You know, if I'm only gonna do a couple of events or no events, you know, it might not be feasible to, uh, purchase that one. That's almost a thousand dollars. Um, and the Native Texan is a spring campaign, the six fun things to do in Glen Rose, which is thirty-five hundred dollars. So we could knock off close to forty-five hundred dollars off of that amount, which is. The whole, all of it is twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. If we get it less than twenty thousand for that, if we so choose. Um, any other questions on the advertising?
Don't look like it.
Okay. Uh, tourism shows, um, I have not planned on going to any large shows. But I've created a lot of relationships in the state, which I would like to, to keep up with. Um, one of the shows is the State Fair. Uh, every year I go to the State Fair for a full day to work in the Texas Travel Booth. Um, and we get a table to promote Somerville County and talk to people all about Somerville County. I usually do it on Columbus Day just because it's a holiday and there's a lot of people that come through at that time. That only costs us about fifty dollars for that one day space. So, and then, um, the Travel Expo is actually, um, through Texas Travel Alliance. And it is where, I call it speed dating. It's speed dating of all the travel information centers. All the employees that work for the State of Texas Travel, Travel Information Centers and so forth. Through those relationships, I have several of them that ask me to come to their travel information center at certain times of the year. To set up a booth about Glen Rose to share, you know, what we have here in Somerville County. Um, and that doesn't cost us anything. So I've already been once this year. They want me to come back in September. However, I think I just realized the date they sent me was my daughter's wedding week, so I may not be able to.
Might not be good, yeah.
Yeah, they usually do a big one, uh, during the Texas OU game. And that's when they bring me up there, cause everybody's crossing the border to come to that. And that's always a good one, but I don't think I can do it this year. But it, it does maintain those relationships with all of those travel information counselors and that's very important to have. So that's about, that's all I've budgeted for, uh, the county CBB as far as going places. With the exception if the, uh, golf course decides they want me to go to the golf show. Usually they have me go. I work the booth the entire time. Steve and Jeff come. Steve usually comes two days or almost all day. Jeff usually comes for one day. They're not in the booth a lot, so, uh, that would be up to them. Any questions on the shows? Move on. Association dues, um, at one point when I first became the county, uh, tourism director, I was asked to maintain all the relationships. So I had, you know, organizations, associations and all that stuff. Uh, when we split with the city, I, I was only a member of just a couple of those organizations. Texas Travel Alliance and, uh, Texas Association of Venues and Facilities. Texas Association of Venues and Facilities, I'm a member of because it's all about places like the expo, the rooster, places where we can host events and stuff. And through that organization, I don't know if y'all remember the, um, booth that I had purchased, uh, when I was, we were sitting on county. That was through a vendor that's a member, associate member of that organization. We get seventy percent off of their supplies. Um, there's also like another vendor that does the replacement, uh, divider walls like there are at the Expo Center that need badly to be replaced. So it's very beneficial to be in there. Plus it also helps answer questions on how to, how do you guys handle, uh, alcohol in the building? Or how do you, you know, what do you do as far as this type of contract or, or that type of stuff? So those are the only two that I have been currently associ- uh, associated with, with the exception of THLA. THLA is the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. The county used to pay for all of the lodging partners in the city and the county to have a membership to it. That was close to eight thousand dollars. Um, we cut that out this year and we just did an individual membership through myself, which is four hundred dollars. I can still call on behalf of my lodging partners and ask legal questions. Uh, so that is our way of finding out if this is legal, if this is not legal. Uh, what are the new state laws as far as hotel tax goes? Uh, what's the direction that the legislation is going as far as hotel tax and that type? So that's, that's a very important organization. That's four hundred a year. Uh, TTA is Texas Travel Asso- uh, Association. That is another valuable association. That, uh, goes over our legislation changes in hotel tax. Uh, it's very, very informative as far as, uh, what all's happening in the travel and tourism industry. TXAF is like two hundred dollars a year. Uh, TACBB is the Texas Association of CBBS. I've been a member, I've been a board member for that organization in the past. Um, that's where all the tourism facilities go for their annual conference. Uh, they have different types of classes for, you know, new updates on, uh, how to storytelling, you know, for your CBB and, and all kinds of stuff. So it can be very informative. I already have my, uh, DMO through there, which is a certification. Uh, it's my destination management, uh, organization person. So I've already got that, but they, it does have some good information there, but it's not one that I would have to go to. But it does keep my relationships out in the state. I have a lot of far-reaching relationships. You know, the less I'm seen, the, the more I'm forgotten, but that's okay. Uh, and then the Lakes Trail, we get exhibits from the Lakes Trail. Uh, so y'all may have gone to the Kona Park exhibit that we held at Bernard's Mill. And the, uh, Women in Aviation, those are, those all come from being a member of the Texas, uh, Trails, Lakes Trails. Uh, they also do different traveling to different facilities, travel information centers and that type of stuff. In order to get to the State Fair, to have, be able to have a booth, you need to be a member of the Texas Lakes Trail. So, any questions on the association dues? Kinda lined it out on this printed thing, if y'all understand, what each of them are.
Don't sound like it. I said, doesn't sound like it. Move on.
Okay, on, uh, salaries, all I keep in is salary for myself and for Pearl. Uh, I'm not requesting another event coordinator. Um, it actually would be cheaper for me to hire an actual production company, uh, to help out with those events. Uh, than to hire an event coordinator. And so, I have not put them in there. It's just mine and Pearl's, uh, salary, insurance, retirement, all that stuff. Uh, postage, three-ten. Of course, it runs high because we do mail out those magazines to every person asking for information. But I feel that's vital, otherwise they wouldn't have information on Somerville County. Uh, our website will also have search engine keywords that will send people directly to our website. Um, so that's gonna be beneficial as well. Uh, but, yeah, the magazines cost a little bit more to, uh, mail out, but they are certainly well-received. And instead of mailing boxes to a lot of our travel information centers, the one that, the ones that request them, from us the most are on the Louisiana line. And the Oklahoma line. And those I tend to just, I'll just drive to those three, you know, in a day or so and drop those off. Just cheaper to do that than to mail three, two or three boxes to them each time they're requesting it. The computer, what I put on there under computer supplies, I'm not sure where y'all want this, but, you know, we did sign a contract with our, my web developer. Uh, for him to develop website, to maintain it, to add pictures, to, you know, do all of that. So that's what I put, I put that under, uh, four hundred. Six forty-nine, four hundred. No, no, six forty-nine, three twelve. Uh, seminars, um, I'm putting the conferences under seminars. That's the only place I could find where to go. Uh, the seminars, I went in and got estimated prices for the next few year, for this coming up year. TTA, TTIA is approximately, and this includes hotel, uh, seminar fee, mileage and meals. Uh, TTIA is thirteen hundred and fifty, TXAV is, uh, eight hundred, TACBB is eighteen fifty. So, be up to you to decide which one you want me to go to. Um, and then, the building and grounds, four fifty. Um, since y'all agreed to, uh, go at the rental of the office space at Bernard's Mill, I added that amount under building and grounds. And then the last thing is the event fees. Uh, it's, it's much like, um, the above. I have talked to the production company that I'm interested in using. And approximately fifty thousand is just an estimated number for all the events that I'm talking about there.
You think that will cover all of them?
I.
Pretty much?
Pretty close, yes, sir. I mean, and I'm talking bands and stages and all of this.
Turnkey counter, yeah.
Turnkey kinda thing, yes. And that's all I have. I did include in your packet, uh, since there's some, the hotels tax two-step, uh, pages. There are only nine things that hotel tax can be used for. And so this kind of, uh, lines that out for you. And, um, just to give you a little bit of information, I know there's been some talks with the city. Uh, the city has the book at Glen Rose Facebook page and I know she does a lot of videos and posting emojis and stuff on that. But people don't know, kinda get to the Facebook page, they don't know what this. And she's rebranded, you know, I'm rebranding. So, by getting out there and being in those magazines, that gets the name out for people to come in, you know, and ask for information or to come here. So it's not just social media, it's the websites, it's the social media, it's the ads, it's the radio representation. Uh, it's representing the county with the golf courses, the expo, county. It's representing the county with the golf courses, the Expo, county lodging. Also in our department, something you might not be aware of, but we do all the rentals for the county, community center, all the parks. Pearl checks the community center, picks up the keys, makes sure everything's good. She books over one of those things. And she answers all the questions. When we did split, we kept the original number for the CBB, which has been that number for the last ten years. So anybody who's been familiar with us, that's the number, and that's the number that's still on the magazine. Our PO box is still on the magazine. We kept that PO box as well. So most everything we have out right now under our new logo has the phone number that's been there forever and the PO box that's been there forever. So that helps. And when people call, people come in from out of state and even from the state down in the Houston area because they want Pearl. And they bring more people back. And they always come back in and say hi to Pearl and introduce her to the people that they brought. Pearl being bilingual has helped expand our diversity and new people that come in. We answer calls, we mail out all the magazines. The city does not have a tourism center where people can actually go in and ask for information, pick up information, which is something that's very much needed. You know, we're, we used to keep a record of how many people came into the center every day. Now I'm going to start having Pearl do that again with all the phone calls that she takes, you know, pertaining to CBB and all the visitors that come in, you know, to get information, find out stuff. I mean, basically she's the Yellow Pages for Glen Rose. If anybody needs a, Danny's phone number or whatever they call us, because we're supposed to know everything, which is fine. She also recommends when people call to ask about where to stay, she recommends county lodging places first. So that's very beneficial. We do represent all the attractions. You know, the city represents some of the attractions, but there are some that they kind of refuse to represent, such as the Creation Evergreens Museum. I know when I first got here, that was a point of contention. People thought it was like, you know, a wacko place and who wants to go there? So I, I've worked my butt off in the last twelve years trying to turn around the reputation of that place with what all they have. You know, you can believe what you want to about Evolution or Creation or whatever.
Everybody's on the lead.
But the things in that museum are amazing. So I've worked my tail off getting that out there. And I work very well with all of the people with all of our attractions. All the attractions are in the county. I don't mind doing events, and I've done some very, very successful events. We represent throughout the state. Also on hotel tax, those that we know of, we send out a notice every month to remind them that their hotel tax is due on the twentieth of each month. We don't know how much they had, you know, how much was turned in or how many people stayed there, but we send them a notice to remind them, oh yeah, I need to pay this. And that's not currently being done, you know, with the city. I will also say one other thing is the city has spent money on this geo-fence tracking to track how many tourists come into downtown. According to Rita's results is that the historic downtown brings in more tourism than the fossil rim, dinosaur valley, state park and everything. My, I've known about that program for years. I didn't use it because it tracks every single cell phone. It doesn't know if you're a tourist or if you're working here. So, you know, I may drive down here five times a day, which looks like we've had five tourists come downtown, you know, in the day. Everybody who comes to work here, everybody who goes to build a 144 to go out of town. They're all being counted as tourists for the downtown area. So that is one reason why I have never used that, because I feel it like it's false information. So that's my spiel. Any other questions?
Well, let's just talk about the elephant in the room as we move forward, so we don't give you any false hope. You know what I'm saying? If we're talking about, you know, paring the CBB down, if we're talking about someday moving out of it, we just need to discuss it as a whole, so everybody's on the same page, you know? So, you know, if you get a year's budget, cool, then you know you're good till next year, then maybe you don't get the next year's budget. I don't know everybody and everybody's thoughts, okay? But I figured something that maybe we ought to discuss to see what our future holds as we move forward.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, know what my future entails if I'm going to be able to retire from here or if I'm going to be gone in a year. My main concern right now is Pearl. We combined with the county, we...
She took a leap of faith to come over with us.
Promised Pearl that we would take care of her as far as insurance and all that stuff. If y'all do decide to make the decision to dissolve the county CBB, I feel like it would be a mistake, but I understand people saying, why do we have two doing the same thing? I don't do the same thing she does. We don't. She's a marketer. She's buying stuff for people to buy once they get here. But that's not getting people here. The point of tourism is to get out there and get people to come to Glen Rose. You don't get people to come to Glen Rose on a Facebook page by telling them you have mugs to sell for thirty dollars, or you have free t-shirts, or you have t-shirts yourself. That's only if you're already here. So it's up to you guys. You know, I can still retire if y'all are so deemed that you want me gone in a year or want to dissolve the CBB. But I think y'all need to take into consideration everything that I've actually done and how much I actually promote. And to be honest, I mean, we run the Somerville County, Texas Facebook page, which has been used during COVID to burnout announcements about, you know, statistics each month. You know, I've helped do a lot of PR for the fire, you know, on that and type of stuff like that. So we've stepped in a lot of places that CBB don't normally step in. But my main concern is to make sure that we take care of Pearl if y'all decide to get rid of me.
And, and y'all can blame me for bringing this up because Kelly and I have talked about our future many times last few weeks. We, what, last three, four, five weeks, we talked about it many, many times on where we're headed, what we're doing, what the courts will do, not do is strictly their total decision. But I just feel like, you know, that as a whole, we need to discuss it because you and I have discussed it many, many times.
I would like to know what the reasons would be.
Well, my opinion is it was successful before we got in with the city.
Yes.
And my gut feeling was, was when we got in with the city, we shouldn't have done that. And I should have known better because it played out just the way I thought it would play out. And now you're trying to start over. I understand the numbers look a little weak right now, but I think it will improve as we go along to get back where we were before because it was working. I mean, the golf course, I mean, and all the stuff, the advertising you do and the events you hold. I think we'll, once you get all this, the payments going to where they're supposed to be going, and I think it's a good thing. I think it's something we can support and I think the sales tax can support it.
I just, I understand that the numbers look a little weak right now. The only thing saving us right now is that county sales tax can be used for tourism until I can get this up, you know, through Airbnb, HomeAway or whatever, so.
Do you mind, it may be right in front of me, Kelly, and I'm not seeing it, and I apologize for that. If we take away the salary of the assistant and we take away some of the travel shows and we take away some of the advertising, do you mind by the end of July, like come back and say, okay, this is exactly what we'd be expending because...
Can you tell me which ones you want me to mark out?
Well, I can, I can answer the question for you. You tell us which one you think's the best to go to.
There you go. Pair it down and see what we should keep, what we should do away with, because that's who work our way, and I'm not speaking for y'all guys, I'm not speaking for anybody. I'm just asking, as we work our way through July before we get to August first, then we can say, okay, if we do this, this and this, this is the only number we'd use out of sales tax to keep you going. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, yeah, you say, yeah, whatever, like, like what you said, out of those one, two, three, five shows, which ones you think you ought to do? Out of the events, which ones you ought to do? The money you ought to expend, so on and so forth.
I think that State Fair is a big deal. I think that's a...
Oh, it's only fifty dollars. I mean, I'll pay the fifty dollars. Seriously. Fifty dollars for a full day of advertising at the State of Fair.
And then also she goes to Texas.
Yeah, and Jeff can help. Jeff can help out on this side over here because right now we've got it in a good position where, not that we want to get it in a bad position again, but we've got it in a good position where it can take care of itself and maintain itself and then relieve the sales tax of that expense.
For the advertising, yes.
Yes. And then...
How many shows were there? Actually, three that you got here?
Shows, yeah. The Travel Expo is four hundred and fifty. That, that one I feel is invaluable. That's our once-a-year term to talk to all the travel information counselors, find out how the magazine's doing, find out, you know, what they have coming up, then finding out what we have coming up, what's new, all that kind of stuff. I mean, that, those two are five hundred dollars.
Right. Well, you know, I can't, you tell us what's the best one, then that's where we're good.
Yeah, you give us, you know, exact what it would take, how the sales tax keep you alive.
And I can pair down, just lost all my paperwork. Oh, there it is.
Doing away with salaries and benefits as they use.
Salaries, I mean, that can't, that's not going to change.
Right. But doing away with that one position...
Doing away with the other position, that was forty-five, not counting, insurance, retirement, workman's comp, all of that stuff. So actually it was a little more than forty-five thousand. So...
One of the things I would like to look at, Kelly, and it's no secret, I've mentioned this before, I think you and I have talked about it before, is the productions. Us being in the production business, is it worth it? I realize it's a great thing and I enjoy the shows first and foremost. Let me, let me make that clear. I thoroughly enjoy going to these events that we put on. I think it's really good for the community. What I'm asking is, does it bring you enough to make it worth it? That's, and I don't know that you know, I don't expect you to know those numbers right now off the top of your head, but that's what, I know it brings a lot of folks in to the city or to the community, don't get me wrong. But those folks are eating, for the most part, if they're not doing the food truck thing, they're eating in town. They're staying, if they stay, not all, but a lot are staying in town. Again, I'm not saying, let's take away from the city or the city, you know, I don't want the city to make money because if, if somebody's doing it, we're all doing it.
Right.
That kind of thing.
If everybody's successful, everybody's successful.
Right.
That's why I pair it back to just two events, Jeff, because those two events are three-day events.
Right.
So, and the River Fest was extremely successful with people coming and staying. They still want to come back. You know, the whole point was people be able to come out and listen to music all day, walk the river all day. They do it the next day, you know, it, we made those to where they were events that people would want to come and stay over. Same thing with the Moonshine Festival slash Heritage Festival, you know, everybody wants to come and listen to some music and taste the moonshine or whatever.
Right, I dig it. Like I said, I enjoy them.
I'm just saying, that's the reason why I made those two, if they're, if they're only one-day events, it's not really any purpose in doing it because they, you know, one day they'll come, they'll stay late, they'll drive back home. It's trying to get people here to come and stay and doing it through our website and they see, because we have some amazing lodging in this county. Some of it has been on the cover of Southern Living Magazine.
Yeah, no doubt, no question.
Cover of Texas Highways Magazine.
Yeah, no question. This is a great place to come and visit and hang out.
Right.
And, and I hear people tell me that wherever I go.
Right.
Of people from all over telling me they know where Glen Rose is and love to come here.
You know, I've been doing this for eleven, twelve years now here in Glen Rose, pretty much dedicated my life to this. But when I first started out in tourism, people would ask me where I was from, I'd say Glen Rose. They'd be like, where's that? Then I'd have to say, you know, where Cranberry is, and they're like, oh, yeah, I'm over fifteen minutes from Cranberry.
Right.
I will say, in my years of pushing Glen Rose, pushing Glen Rose, pushing Somerville County, I don't have to mention Cranberry anymore.
A penguin in the swamp.
I do not have to mention Cranberry.
You're right, I totally agree.
I say Glen Rose, they're like, oh, yeah, y'all are those dinosaur people.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Dinosaur, moonshine, nuclear power.
Man Shyne, you know, all about our history, so. So do you want me to just come back or you want me to tell you what I think I can...
Yeah, if you can just give us like seventeenth or twenty-fourth of July, about thirty-first, when we're going through our actual talks, and you come back and you say, this is the amount that I've got coming in, this is the amount that it would take off sales tax to get us through this year, and then if we... Here again, I'm speaking for the court. Right, if you say, okay, then the sales tax, they're not sales tax, hot tax does start increasing over the next years as we start trying to accumulate from all these folks that we know we're not collecting from.
Right.
Then we may have a bigger budget to work from. If we don't have a bigger budget to work from, then next year we look at it and say, yeah, this, this damn thing ain't working or this damn thing is working. You know what I mean? And that's no disrespect to you. I think you know that from me, that's, that's no disrespect because...
Like I said, I'd just like to hear the reasoning of getting rid of us. Y'all can hear your concerns.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm of a different opinion, I guess, everybody, but in the last year, I just, I just haven't seen this move forward in any way. Anything, nothing, nothing positive has come out of CBB, nothing, I don't think. Every, everything has been a failure, you know? And it's, it's nothing personal, I don't even really know you. I just think that, and it, and it has to do with moving a lot, I think.
Well, moving a lot, transition from the city and county.
Yeah, but that wasn't all her fault. It wasn't all her fault, I realize that. But, you know, you had the, the, the Peluxi Fest that you canceled and then...
Weren't there reasons for that?
And then there's, there wasn't a good turnout. I had a lot of calls on the floating Peluxi or whatever, well, it wasn't floating Peluxi, it was the bands on, on Friday night. It wasn't long enough. Of course, we had personnel problems.
Well, I wish you'd let me know on that, but I do know the people that did come, we talked and next year if we're doing this, we'll be changing the time to six to eight to seven to nine, so more people can come after work. So it, you know, that was a...
This was a first-time tryout, right? For Friday night, I think? You got to try things out first before you judge it.
And Richard, I don't know if you went to the Peluxi, River Fest the year before when I did it?
She inherited it.
And it was hugely successful.
Sure, I did, I did, y'all.
We had thousands of people coming.
And I don't understand why it was, why it was canceled. You know, the city was able to pick it up and, and move forward with it in a week's time, and it was successful.
And it lost thirty-thousand, thirty-three thousand dollars.
Why couldn't we have done that? It would have probably been bigger.
Because it was, at the time that I realized that she had not done what she was supposed to have been doing all along, I had no bands scheduled, I had no vendors scheduled, it was already the end of May, and this was supposed to happen May thirty-first. There was no way I could get, you know, at that time too, I was trying to run the Expo, there was no way I could hire twenty bands in two days with thirty-day notice as well as vendors. And so...
But you supervised that.
Hmm?
You supervised all that. You really, you really go to. It was your responsibility.
It is. And, but if your person won't tell you what they're doing or how far they are, it's kind of hard for me to find out.
Stuff, yeah.
I mean, I can go in there and ask, how are we? I have to, went in there, how are we doing? Oh, we're doing great. We're doing great. How many did we have? Well, I've got a few, you know? So, yeah, Richard, I mean, I didn't go into that, but...
And not trying to defend Kelly or anybody that we had, yeah. The end of last year and the first part of this year was very tumultuous with all the folks that we put in and out of the Expo and, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, I think you expected more out of that person. I think that person expected more out of you, and then things just dissolved into a total disaster. But, and again, I'm not trying to defend anybody, I'm just trying to say, the last three months of last year and the first three months of this year were pretty much total hell, wouldn't you say?
It's a mess.
It, it was very, very tumultuous. Now, where we move forward, get better, I don't know.
In reference to you, Richard, and you're not saying anything good coming out of the CBB. I will say this, in reference to you, Richard, and you're not saying anything good come out of the C V B. I'll promise you, when you shut us down, you'll see a big difference. There's gonna be a huge difference, so.
I didn't support the splitting of the C V, C V B, I didn't, I thought you should have hung on to that and just rode it out and promoted Glen Rose and Summerville Academy. I, I wasn't a, I wasn't a supporter of that, but it split, and, like I said, I haven't seen anything really, really positive. So, you, maybe you're right, I don't know.
And the reasoning for that was what? Because they were accusing you of stuff?
Yeah.
That was a whole nother nightmare.
Yeah, another nightmare.
So we weren't getting reports, we weren't being honest.
There are a lot of things that we do that bring people to this town, that y'all, nobody ever even thinks about, you know. The amount of magazines we mail out to people or bring in. Pearl puts personal messages in some that come through that said that I have three kids that we're bringing in, you know, she'll put little dinosaurs in the, you know, thing for them, to make it feel like, you know, they're special. That's, you know, I'm just saying, there are a lot of things, and the golf course would not be doing as good as they are if I was not at golf shows, if I was not advertising in the golf magazines for creating those ads and all that stuff, so, you know. I, I respect your opinion, Richard, I just think you need to, uh, maybe understand a little bit more about the situation and ask more questions, 'cause I know you've never come to talk to me about the tourism department. Jeff?
I'm stuck on the productions, I'll be honest, okay? That's a deal horse I keep beating on. No, 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 that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm necessarily saying, okay? Where do we stand with the city picking up this festival they picked up last year? Are they expecting to do it again, or are we expected, I mean, we need to, I'm just asking, are we communicating that?
Administrator when they asked if they could do it, and Wade, you can tell, it was told to them that, yes, if they wanna do that, they can do it this year, but it is not gonna be called the Plexi River Fest, and we will be doing it again next year on the River.
I understand, I understand.
So, it's, what they did is, was really not the point of why people came to the River Fest, and you can see that from the attendance that they had.
Well, and, and what I, and I know I'm, I'm saying bad words here, okay? I know I am, but I'm gonna say them anyway. What about partnering with them on some of these festivals? Yeah, I said it, my God, I said it.
You're trying to give me cuss on record, aren't you?
I'm not trying to raise the roof, I'm not trying to make the roof collapse.
No, I know.
Just thought, and, because it brings people into both freaking.
I agree.
C V Bs, and, and, and I know there's a lot of animosity, I realize that. And, and I'm not saying we gotta do it, I'm just saying what if, I'm just throwing out the thought.
I don't have a problem asking them.
I saw the daggers flying at me from my compadres over here.
I don't have a problem asking them if, you know, like on this production company, you know, fifty thousand, they weren't gonna pass on that.
I guess that's what I'm talking about, looking at the possibility, I'm not saying it's, it's dependent upon that.
Maybe split costs to make it happen.
But I do know that the decisions on the financial side from the city is going to the city administrator. The city C V B person does not make any financial decisions.
Right, I understand, I understand.
So we know how the administrator is.
I, I, I did visit with you one time.
But we gotta get past.
Well, I actually made it more than one time.
You did?
And I told you, uh, that I wanted you to work with the city, I wanted you to make peace, I guess. I know there's a lot of bad blood, but I did visit with you in my office, and I told you about that. I told you about the vendors that all needed to be, uh, not, well, it was brought up by a couple vendors, but one in particular that I guess y'all can't stand or whatever, but she needed to be part of it.
I understand that, and actually, I made amends with vendors at the country Christmas thing. I was the only one that did, and that wasn't even my thing. I didn't set up that event, it wasn't my, not my event at all, but I went up there to try and make amends with the vendors because it was a Hank F M partnership with the expo, and Hank was livid. And we don't need to lose that relationship with the radio station that we work with that has classic rock and country and old country, you know, I mean, so I went up there and I made amends with all of those vendors. All of those vendors know, they can give them to another event in Glen Rose if I'm doing it, and get free for the ones that were here, uh, at that. And Richard, I have spoken with Rita, and we've actually had conference calls, uh, on the things that, the, uh, magazines that she does versus the magazines I do, so that there's not an overlap on that.
I don't know her, I've met her a couple times, and I asked her if y'all were communicating, and she said that you wouldn't answer your phone.
I can get you with the A J R person to tell you, to tell you about the three-way.
And, and it, it doesn't matter to me what happened in the past, I, I could care less about what happened over the foot city. That's not, that's not where I'm coming from, I'm just saying, you know, we were both successful, and we're both successful. We need to help one another, you know. Period, whatever happened, happened, it's already water under the bridge.
And that's what I'm trying to do, is move on.
So are we all good if Kelly brings back exactly what it would take, our sales tax, to get her through this one year, and then we review where we're at there, and then?
Good with that.
Get through this budget cycle, and we see what we pick up, what we take off, and what we make and bring in? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Or, you know, I can give it to you, you know, talk to find somebody who might produce.
No, that's not what we're asking.
That's what we're asking you to do.
Let's go down this other path first.
Which path?
The path that just tells us, you know, have you reduced expenses, the ones that you need to do, the ones that you want to do, and then what it takes to keep us, keep us going.
You know what?
And I know you've had a lot.
Give us your best advice on which ones you need to take care of, which you need to go to.
You've had a lot of personal things going on with your family this last year, and I totally understand that, 'cause I was there too.
I've still been working.
And it's kind of funny how some people gloat about how you're doing things, 'cause I don't think she's doing anything wrong.
Hey, Valerie.
Thank you for your time, Kelly.
Take care of Windmore Productions, that check you showed me the other day, you took care of them, good. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Well, that's the last thing we had scheduled for lunch. If y'all wanna go to lunch, we'll come back at one-thirty, we got Trey and Hailey, and whatever y'all want to discuss after that will be up to y'all.
Okay.
Uh, wait a minute, I better get Stephanie.
Turn it off.
I, I forgot again. Give me just a minute. Got too damn many Kellys and too many Jeffs. Jeff Harris, Jeff Hanson, Jeff Haynes.
All Jeffs, all Jeffs.
Kelly Harris, Kelly Campbell. I think they hired another Kelly somewhere, I'm trying to pick y'all the right one out.
I broke my own pair of glasses.
You're gonna burn.
I got a new pair, but I left them at home, so.
I've asked Kelly to come back, so she can turn off her speaker.
Yes, sir.
If she didn't get that within a few seconds, I'll walk down there and get her. Uh, there she is.
Steph?
Yeah, she should be on her way right now. Nikki, getting all this put in by next Wednesday, maybe a whole lot to ask, huh? Think you'll be able to give a printout to all of us where we're at next Wednesday? Give us a rough draft to begin with? I hope we're gonna meet with Wes and Bruce Medley, hopefully sometime Monday or Tuesday, if we get everything in line, hopefully for Wednesday. How we doing, Steph?
Good, thank you.
We'll try to do this right this time. All right, we're gonna break for lunch at eleven, eleven A M on tenth day of July, and we'll reconvene at one-thirty P M after we all have lunch. Thank you, Kelly. All right, it is one-thirty, Wednesday evening, whatever the date is, the tenth of July. We are reconvening in our budget workshop, at the regular show, Jeff Harris, Richard Tulliver, Danny Chambers, Tammy Ray, and Wade Bush are all present, and we'll move forward, Trey, if you don't mind, right quick, with Haley, I'll get your name right here in a minute. I think it's something we gotta take to the court, but you need to advise me, you know, this deal on the two oh seven K on some, you know, it gets a six months, a one-year, the ten years, fifteen years. Fire Department gets six months, one-year, ten-year, fifteen years. The Sheriff's Office gets six months, one-year, and it jumps to fifteen years. Is that something that, what do we need to do? Do we need to do that like a special, bring it to us any month or at the beginning of the budget cycle, how does that work?
Your two oh seven K?
Yes.
I'm not versed in it. So he was handling it, I guess Valerie's handling it.
Sorry, Nikki.
The, uh, I don't think it was always that way, because we used to do it, but.
The ten years, ten years used to be in there, should it still be in there? Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be, or, or, what are y'all talking about? Vacation accrual.
Accrual, it looks like maybe it was once there, six months, one, ten, fifteen.
Yeah.
And then somehow in the Sheriff's Department, the tenure disappeared.
I have heard that it's wonky, that when Cindy was handling payroll, but I didn't know specifically, I just knew it was wonky.
Is that in the handbook?
No, well, I guess it is, 'cause this is where I guess Jeff now pulled it from.
When they redid it, they.
We may, when it was redone, it probably was just, we probably need to go back and look at the.
Updated, updated.
Copy, yeah, and just updated and bring it back, because they were, I'm pretty sure on the.
Yeah, we redid the handbook, we didn't take none of that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just typo.
I think it was probably a typo.
Says agreed, that's, I just, I think it's a typo and what's that.
I would say just put it on the agenda, come back, it would've been the handbook to have that.
Unless it says it already.
Yeah.
Let me hang on to that, then, I don't know how to word it, to do it on the agenda, and then I guess we'll do this handbook, file handbook.
Yeah, it's probably the same.
Well, if y'all don't mind, just looking into it, about time we have an August meeting, and we can put on August meeting. All right, sorry, Trey. Now we'll get back to you, Trey, and everybody's got a copy of your budget, including Nikki, and I'll just let you start at the top and go where you think you wanna go.
Yeah, gosh, so, sorry, I scratched out so much stuff. So we got the one oh two down there, that second line, the D A supplement that was going to Dale Hannah, said it twenty-one thousand. With him losing, um, I've talked with Tim, Tim has asked us to revise that to give him two thousand. With the conversation I had with him, that I would like to give that other nineteen thousand added into Martin's salary. What I didn't realize, you know, we got that, I got that hundred thousand dollars in Senate Bill twenty-two, but by the time you take out the benefits, Martin's actually only making about seventy thousand dollars, and most prosecutor's offices are paying about one forty or one sixty now for assistant D As. So, I don't wanna get him up there, and with the promise that Tim made to you guys, that he's gonna relinquish the D A spot and give it to me here in the next year or two, um, I was kind of hoping to bump Martin's salary up now some, and then if my salary becomes state, then take some of that money to get Martin up to what an actual assistant official attorney would make. And, and I think realistically, if we could get him to one thirty or one forty at some point down the road, not this year, I think he'll be happy in state, he's not gonna go anywhere. But, I mean, right now, seventy thousand with the experience he's got being an attorney, he don't wanna go anywhere, but we need to get him more money, 'cause I think you guys know he's definitely worth having during the meeting, especially if we take over doing felonies, and we get that back from Johnson County.
So you're talking about taking nineteen from World War Pan and the D A, I'm just clarifying, Trey.
Yeah, sorry, so send two thousand, and I guess Dale will get it for three months, and then the remainder, the nine months will go to Tim.
Uh-huh.
And then take nineteen thou- only nineteen thousand that's left and add that in as a line item to pay Martin, so, at this point.
What, okay, wouldn't necessarily be a line item, would it, Nikki, just roll into that, wouldn't it?
It looks like, are we calling him right now victim assistant coordinator, 'cause he's got seventy thousand there?
Yeah, that's what it was, I had to go clarify that, but that's just kind of how they logged him in. I guess we need to change that to assistant.
Part of that still comes from S B twenty-two also.
Yeah, he's still needed the, basically, seventy thousand of his salary is covered by Senate Bill twenty-two, and the other thirty covers his benefits.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
And you, I don't know, were you in here, we talked with Sheriff's Department yesterday about, you know, supposedly that money's gonna be with us a minimum of three to four years, we hope, maybe longer, maybe not, but anyhow, Trey, we have to just cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, we'll have to cross that, and then I just put in here, I was asking to raise that seventy that we have in there up to a hundred, but if you guys are comfortable with doing that, and we can do it incremental over a couple of years, I was trying to find something in the middle where I wasn't taking a big chunk of budget out of one year, just to get a bunch of money, but.
Well, you're supposed to be guaranteed, if we apply between August fifteenth and October first, you and the Sheriff's Department both, they're supposed to be guaranteed that money, supposedly.
We'll still get him seventy, so what I was proposing was just do a line item to pay him thirty, and then give him the nineteen from Tim, that puts him at one nineteen, and that should keep him around forever. If y'all wanna go that much, or maybe do fifteen this year and fifteen next year to get him up to that amount, I think that would keep him here without him getting bored and leaving, going anywhere.
Miss Nikki understands that, we're good.
That.
Yeah, I'll get with you, and we'll.
Yeah, I really don't wanna do that, but I didn't realize, you know, when he came on board, and we were like a hundred thousand, and he got his first paycheck, and we started looking, we're like, oh, that's not good.
Yeah, but then if you take everything out, he probably has dependence on his insurance, I imagine.
Yeah.
And that's a big chunk.
And I mean, luckily he's retired, so he's getting a retirement check, but it's still not.
Yeah, we don't wanna lose him.
Yeah.
He's fun to watch in court. Okay, so, let's move on to the next line item.
Um, the office supplies, I just sent about five hundred bucks from a thousand to fifteen hundred, sorry, jumping down to three eleven.
Yep.
Just because the cost of everything is going up.
Yep.
Maybe we won't use it, we can give it a little bit back, but it's there, and I don't have to come ask y'all for more later. Four oh one, the county seminar expenses, it's six thousand, I'm asking to jump that to eight thousand, 'cause now we got Martin on board, so I gotta pay for one more person. Actually, I should probably change that to nine, just to cover it, 'cause Karen's gotta go to training, Martin and I have to go to training, and then we talked about Daryl in a minute, he's gonna have to have some continuing education for the T Col classes. Is it still T Col, or did they change the name of that?
T Col.
Still T Col? That we'll have to come up with to cover that. Four fourteen, outside attorney expenses, um, don't wanna get into that specifically, but from outside discussions that we have, I'd recommend putting seventy-five thousand in that, just in case we need it, and it's there. And then the only thing that I've got is, you know, I, I, when I first got here, we talked about if we could ever get Daryl McCready back over here, and with Dale losing, and again, going back to the promise that Tim made to turn the felony jurisdiction over to us, I propose that we bring Daryl in at an annual salary of fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. He's sixty-seven years old, so he doesn't need a benefit package. Um, I, I can't remember if this is thirty-two or thirty-five bucks an hour, is what, what he was asking for, somewhere in that range to come up with this figure. Nikki is seventy-eight, two forty. But, I mean, I think we all know Daryl, we can, I can utilize him now, I'm sure you guys, he could help the Sheriff's Department out if they need to help us something, but if we don't get in now, knowing Daryl, he'll go find another department to work for, and he's super loyal, and we're not gonna get another chance to get him here.
And if you're comfortable talking about this, let's talk about it, if you're not comfortable talking about it, tell me, this is subject for another day, okay? The D A office supplement, okay, say that Tim goes ahead and lets y'all prosecute felonies, but you actually don't have the jurisdiction yet, okay? Would that supplement go down to help pay for Daryl? Because we probably still have to give them something for their court reporters and their judges, or is that, is that hundred thousand? You tell me.
Yeah, and that's what Tim did, knowing with him not in office yet, he can't go in there and talk to him about it, but this hundred grand, really, Johnson County's still focused a little bit, by the time you pay for one or two prosecutors to go over twice a month, and then the trials and the court reporters when they're here that week.
So we'd still be taking care of the judges and court reporters, but if y'all take it over temporarily, I know you won't get your state funding until you actually go through legislation and get it signed jurisdiction, but what I'm trying to say, could we take some of that money and funnel it towards y'all and Daryl, instead of what we're doing for their prosecutors right now? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think that from talking to Tim, his thought was, he would deputize us under him and go ahead and let us, under his authority, take over the felonies.
Okay.
And then give us a stoppage for taking over the felonies out of his budget.
Okay.
But until he takes office and figures out what he's doing, we can't really get in there and talk to the commissioners and say, you know, hey, Trey and Martin are over here, can we, can they quit sending a hundred thousand because we're not sending a prosecutor over there?
Okay.
And I think what he was talking about was giving us some of their Senate Bill twenty-two money, so it wouldn't be coming out of this line item, he would just be giving us Senate Bill twenty-two money to cover felonies. So maybe we could back this out later.
Yep.
But I don't want to get rid of this form now because I don't think they'd dig into the fact of how much they're spending over here, and I don't think a hundred thousand's probably covering it, so...
No, Dale convinced me last year it was about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
I think that is way over, but it's probably like one fifty, one sixty, and I don't think we want them looking at that real close.
He had an itemized list last year.
Yeah, every hour, one of us came over.
Every single hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, maybe one fifty, two hundred, but it's not that number that he quoted yet. So I would say leave that, and then we go over there, we can talk to him and explain to him that they're not paying to send a prosecutor over here anymore, maybe we can cut that in half or sixty percent or something.
Another unfair question. Do you think that y'all will go back to the legislators in twenty-five with Tim's blessing to go ahead and try to get jurisdiction for twenty-six?
I think that's what Tim's thinking, because I, I know he talked on you guys and promised that to you, he's told me that that's what he wanted to do.
Because you had it set, ready to go in last legislative session, and then the apple cart got flipped.
And Dale went and do it. We've already talked to Helen Curran, she's on board with it, but honestly, I don't think we need Helen because we've got TDCA that said they could run in there and get it done, just put it on a footer in another bill and...
She did say that she would back that.
Yeah, and I think she's good. I talked to her this morning, actually, on an unrelated item, and I think she'll back it, but I mean, we're getting big enough, we don't need...
I think we need to take care of business here.
Yeah, and I mean, it makes it hard, I know it's only twenty minutes, but it makes it incredibly inconvenient for you guys to have to run warrants over there and have them looked at and brought back, I mean, they'll still have to do that.
There's a lot of schedules and stuff, isn't there?
Yeah.
And it'll be a transition period, we realize the first year will be transitioned, and the next year twenty-six or twenty-seven, then we could actually take...
Yeah, then we could actually take it over. And at that point, you know, we'll have to pay Martin more to make him, make it competitive because now we're doing felonies.
Right.
But I don't think that we would need much more to take it over, other than possibly maybe another secretary depending on, you know, because now we're gonna have all the felony paperwork, so I think maybe only an additional secretary, and we've already got Daryl in place as an investigator, and Martin's already here, so we really were set up to just almost take it.
We're almost there, not quite.
That sounds great.
We're better than we were when we discussed it last time.
Yeah.
So Nikki, what do we need to do on the investigator? Do we add a line item for that?
Probably, yes.
Just county attorney investigator, put a line item in there?
We have time to talk about description.
Probably will.
We'll get to it.
And should we, should we switch Martin from victim assistant coordinator to first assistant?
That's why he's in it, Todd, where he's under first assistant.
Is he?
Oh, is he? Cool. So we just need to change it on our budget sheets and we'll be good to go. Perfect.
What, change Martin's name?
No, he's listed as victim assistant coordinator on our budget, he should be listed as first assistant.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it matters, but Karen's is actually victim assistant coordinator and the secretary, so... That's what confuses me, I'm like, he's getting seventy grand out of the office.
And that adds to the public, that's confusing too, because they're looking at that, where's that money actually going?
Yeah, it's crazy.
They're still using Laura?
Yeah, we're still using Laura, where is that one at?
We used to have it in outside, you know, we did the twelve, and we did the twenty-five. Because you were giving her a thousand a month there at one time, weren't you?
Yeah, we were, and I was gonna ask you guys if we could have that's like twelve fifty? Yeah, she's just part-time, cash pay only.
She does a great job in CPS cases.
She knocks it out in CPS cases, she's also really good at doing soul research when I need her to, and she does that at home, so, yeah. I'd hate to leave servant like you or another two fifty a month just to thank her for staying, you know, doing what she's doing.
Where is she at in here?
I think she's tied to, I suppose she was tied to outside expenses.
Part-time's a one oh five.
But we, if we're gonna tie her to part-time, then we definitely need to up that to whatever twelve fifty comes out.
I guess make that, would it be eighteen? Twelve fifty times twelve, add fifteen to the three and make it eighteen?
What number is that?
Uh, one, one oh five. Yeah, if we bump that to fifteen thousand, I'd give her twelve fifty a month, is that what you're thinking? Twelve fifty a month?
Yeah, if we could do that, and then there's already three thousand in there in case we need it for something else, just make that line item eighteen, I guess, for next year. We could, and then the only thing I've got is the law books, so I was gonna try to bump that to seventy-five hundred from six thousand. We just bought three books and they cost us nineteen hundred dollars, like six weeks ago that Bill Moore said we needed, and it's literally a three-volume set.
What sads of all that's just trying to take care of Commissioner's Court.
Honestly, it is.
It's all it is.
It's all the civil stuff, and he's got a list of other stuff that we needed to buy, but I mean, it's just, it's almost like buying a freaking car.
It's all the law books you and Martin need to try to take care of us.
Yeah, to try to figure out all the stuff between the city and the hospital and everything else, it's crazy. Yeah, and I think that honestly, that was really all that I've got. Are you guys okay with bumping, taking, or I guess throwing thirty thousand in there to the seventy for Martin? And then add nineteen, that put him at one nineteen, or y'all are trying to do half that at fifteen?
Let's leave it and talk about it.
Let's go worst-case scenario right now, is what we've been telling everybody, Trey. Let's do, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, it may come down from my perspective, but let's leave it there.
Yeah, what you said, leave it there now.
Okay, let's do worst case, and we gotta trim and cut, we will by August fifteenth.
And I think, you know, if we can, even if we got, you're commandingly do it over the next couple of years, I think he's okay with, especially if we can give him nineteen, that twenty-one, and then add something to it, we can...
Right.
I think if we get, get him up to actually making a hundred, then I don't think he'd go anywhere.
And hopefully, in twenty-six or twenty-seven, your salary will become state, and then twenty-six, twenty-seven, or twenty-eight, things change.
Yeah, and then at least, you know, if we gotta bump him up, then you've got my seventy-eight, seven fifty that you've slotted over.
You've got other money there to play with. Yes. All right, anything else for Trey? Any questions, issues, or problems?
The only thing that I don't know, sorry, is with Daryl, I talked to him, and he said he's not sure if he would want to start in October, or if he'd run it out with Dale or want to start January one. So that may save us at least three months on there if he decides to run it out till the first year.
Cool.
The only other thing I don't see is a vehicle. How would you handle that?
Yeah, all right, because they give him one in Johnson County, don't they?
I would, I assume they do.
I believe that Tahoe is furnished by Johnson County.
Yeah, it is furnished by Johnson County.
We furnish Heather one for, you know, juvenile through the state, but it's, it's probably nowhere near what Daryl has, if that makes sense. What does she have a focus?
I think it's a torque.
Torque, okay.
Maybe.
Yeah. Of course, she drove the other until the windows wouldn't stay up any longer. So we, I didn't think about that.
Well, I'll tell you, maybe, you know, if we're bringing him in this first year, we're not really sure what to do. My truck's got a hundred and fourteen thousand miles, if he needs to go somewhere, he can drive it, and I can just turn in the reimbursement for mileage, if we're good with that, and then if he's driving all over the place, then next year we can come back and see when time he figures somewhere.
By the time we try to do a vehicle, insurance, everything else, reimbursement's probably cheaper.
Exactly, or maybe just want to drop his truck, either one way or the other, we can get him, he needs to go somewhere, you can just take him, we'll lock the mileage, if we're good with that.
And then we'll have an idea what the expenses are, or if we can outweigh it next year. Okay. Lot up in the air, but we'll decide to meet again next year.
That's probably, yeah, then we gotta apply for that Senate Bill twenty-two money here in August.
August fifteenth, I think, or October first.
Bet like you're saying, at least it's guaranteed, so that...
And they told them in the conference that it looks like it will be for a while.
They say it's in the body of the budget, whatever that, I'm not sure what that means.
I'm not saying, and I was kinda confused, but at least if we get it...
It's something that comes up every year, basically, it's basically like R, I would say.
I think that is the cheapest route as far as...
You know, as far as reimbursement. Each department has some, and this is in a department.
It's not untouchable, but not touched.
They can always hit him over there.
It should be not untouchable.
We're, we're busy, but we're not, that's true, you know, we're not that busy, so maybe we can negotiate a deal with, with the DA over there, in case they need him over there, he can, he can drive that same vehicle.
He, he does not want to...
He doesn't want to work for him at all.
And I don't know, they never had a problem that I knew about, but I think it's honestly just Daryl's loyalty to Dale, and the fact that Tim ran against him, he just doesn't want to have anything to do with Tim once he's out, once Dale's out. And maybe that'll get better over time, but, I mean, I think we all know Daryl, once he gets loyal to somebody, he'll ride with you off the cliff, so...
Yeah.
I think it just kinda made him mad that Tim ran against him.
Well, I mean, he may have to work for them one day.
Yeah, and I mean, I think he, I think he will if he's got to, I just think he doesn't want to be under torture.
Working for him.
Yeah, he'll be working for him. And I think, you know, with Martin, we honestly lucked out because he can be first assistant at Dallas or Tarrant County under the eyes. Between him and I, we're gonna have more trials than if we get into something with a big law firm, Martin and I'll have more jury trials than a whole law firm put together. Just the way it works.
Anything else?
No, I think that's it. I don't know, office-wise, I'll just, we'll stick him in there somewhere, figure it out later. I think he's just happy, you know, I know we talked about getting him over here, and I'm just glad that he's finally decided to come over here, because I think he can help the county and somebody, not just legally, but just law experience and knowledge and stuff that he's got, I think he's gonna be an asset for everybody over here.
Hard for them, I'm thinking. What the hell did we do? Okay, thank you. Well, Trey, might as well stick around for HR, HR due in her, her team.
Yeah, I'm good. Well, you know what, sorry, one other thing I thought about.
Good Lord, man.
I don't know, sorry, come on, let me just...
We were last time.
Yeah.
For, for thirty employees, yeah.
We, y'all's twelve minutes went over, didn't it?
Yeah, no, nevermind, he's good.
No, sorry, go ahead.
On allowance, but I don't think he does, if we're bumping up his salary, he's fine, we're good.
Whatever you think. We bothered you a bunch on your cell phone.
Trey, I mean, talk to Eddie and go through the first net.
You get his extra phones?
Just get him that second phone, that way it's all...
Yeah. You need to do that, see you with him.
And Eddie, we've got a contract with him.
Okay, I'll do that, yeah, because I mean, I, most of our system will be...
We've got a carrier too, but it's, it's all...
Yeah.
Till I, you know...
I need to do that, so, yeah, okay, cool, I'll get with Eddie and just get his phones in there.
We got a bunch for service hours, I don't know how many we've got, what, thirty or so, I know we got a bunch.
Okay, I'll just call Eddie, so don't worry about that, we'll just see if we can get us a couple of...
Well, I'm afraid to ask, but I will. Anything else?
No, we're good. We won.
You sure?
Another department, yeah.
All right, Haley, you're up.
In comparison, mine's pretty simple. It is an increase of forty thousand, four seventy-seven and seventy-six cents, but majority of that is from the salary increase since the last fiscal year was budgeted for about seven months, so you're looking at an additional five months.
Right.
And then plus social security, group medical, retirement, workers' comp, unemployment, things like that, so that's probably where thirty-nine thousand of that comes from. And then everything else, if I didn't use it, I took it away. So, like, printing, I don't print anything special, it's just black and white paper, it goes through office supplies. Equipment rental, I think that was designated for a copier, I don't really need a copier, everything is being done electronically for the most part, so those funds were transferred to seminar expense, because there is a bigger one next year that I want to go to, which is a little more expensive. I'm sorry, rolled that in there, but other than that, I think the only other change is that I'm asking for a five percent merit increase, so that would bring my salary up from fifty-eight to sixty-nine. And with the new salary thresholds anyways, it's gonna have to be at least fifty-nine anyway, or else I'll be eligible for overtime.
We don't want that. Yeah, when does all that take effect? I know it's been voted on and...
Uh, January first, we do, so the state of Texas, for state of Texas employees, is currently under legislation, so I know the state of Texas is arguing it, and it's not, they, they're not applying it to their employees currently. So I don't know if it's gonna be stopped before January first.
What are the feds saying that threshold is right now, as far as, how many employees do we not have that matches, that meets that, I guess is my question.
January first, it's gonna be probably a hefty amount, it's like fifty-eight, eight, or you have to be eligible for overtime. Right now, we only have two that are below the one that was implemented on July first.
Okay.
But I don't think they're supposed to be exempt anyway.
Okay.
So I just need to get with their supervisor and get their duties straight. But I think we're gonna have issues there.
So they can't be exempt unless they're over fifty-eight.
Okay. So we're very, very close to meeting present.
Hopefully, everybody will get a five percent, we'll see.
That's, yeah, that's our goal, yeah.
All right, what else, Haley?
Other than that, that's it. Like I said, that big number is just from the increase in the extra five months of salary and the medical and everything.
Are we good, Sergeant? And at one point, we were talking about Haley was doing all the grants and stuff, are we done with that? Maybe give her increases, she was gonna continue to do them, but is that, are we done?
I think that's behind us for a while. We may...
I don't even want to speak the word.
We may look at it later for like, you know, the Sheriff's Department's got a server they could go after, Fire Department's got a server they could go after, but maybe, maybe not bother Haley with that, but you know, we may look at that. But maybe, maybe not bother Haley with that, but you know, we may look at that.
Cool, but not.
On a whole different. Yeah, not like what we've been through, yeah.
Well, and sometimes it's worth contracting a grant writing firm, paying them a percentage, because you get a hundred thousand and it costs you. Five thousand or ten thousand.
Yeah, they have the ministry too, and it makes it easier on.
It works out pretty good, and that's what they do, so.
And it, I just noticed he was doing it for a while, and it went in the job description.
Right, right.
She's like you, she's done quite a few things the last seven months, and not in y'all's job description.
Yeah, we just did.
Y'all done a bunch.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't even think I could write a job description coming up.
You could not.
I think we made a good choice, Joe.
Yeah.
Y'all did.
You did, y'all made a great choice.
Y'all did. Y'all did. Well Haley, is that it?
That's it, like I said, simple, like comparison.
And I know I'll repeat myself, but y'all just look into that two oh seven K deal, and bring, tell me when I need to bring to the court, and we'll get that rectified and fixed.
That'd be great. On the old version?
We'll take care of that as we move forward. Now, the rest is up to y'all, if you don't talk about anything else, or you wanna wait till the seventeenth, and we go line by line by line. Nikki will put everything in there. And then you'll print out like a copy for each one.
Mind simple.
Mind simple.
Mind simple.
Alright.
I've just got a little bit of change in.
I'm gonna down our own, one of our own materials, move it over into, equal it out over into seminar Spencer, to get it so expensive for training. But we gotta have the training.
That's all.
We don't have, we get removed from office.
Well, it's, it's important too, we learn a lot.
Yeah. Can't absorb all of it sometimes.
No.
Yeah, well, and that's from Martin, I, cause we can do curling stuff, and then we need to do the civil stuff, so it's like, we're kinda all over the place, something up there, all from a different area.
And these chairs aren't near as comfortable as these either.
Yeah, no kidding.
No, and they said you like this.
Yeah, how much can you get for it?
Like this, and twenty people, I was starting to separate tiers.
Well, should I ask Kelly to come back and we adjourn this meeting, unless anybody got anything else they'd like to add or say, or? Except for sheriff's department? Young, good. I'll listen and get Kelly come on back.
For the policies of.
Yeah, every Wednesday this month, seventeen, twenty fourth, and thirty first, we'll meet at nine thirty to go over budget stuff.
Did you come to rechange the buzzer?
Seventeen, them stack for there.
Changed my whole, I wanna like it. Uh, you had a key to your office, so I'm getting it finished now. Basically clean, so, and I'll bring it back.
Thanks for the, I'm sound, well, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, Tim very quiet, so it gets on my desk.